I want to call to order the March 25th, Venter City Committee meeting. Please rise for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Lisa, can I roll call?
Commissioner Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langraff?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman. Let the record reflect Mayor Holtzman is absent.
The Open Public Meetings Act announcement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. Our first item tonight is we're going to go into an executive session. We have some consultants on the line that we want to free up, so we're going to go into that first. Lisa, can you read that for us?
Sure. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits discussion of certain matters within an executive session as an exception to certain provisions of said law. The Venter City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action bonding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within executive session, and the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. The matters should be discussed or matters of ongoing litigation, a tax appeal matter.
Thank you, Lisa. Tim, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to enter executive session as described.
A second. Hold on, favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
Commissioner, I should...
Who should stand?
Hold on one second, Jim.
Okay.
Commissioner, I should indicate that it is 5:37 and the matter to be discussed is Hanson House versus City of Venter.
Okay.
Yes. All right, we're out of executive session. I should indicate that the time is 6:15. We discussed two matters in executive session, both matters of ongoing litigation. One was a tax appeal, Hanson House versus the City of Venter. And we had a very, very brief discussion regarding the matter of Sandstock versus the City of Venter. That case involved a Latin Beach festival that was supposed to happen back in 2013. No formal action will be taken tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Our next item is department head reports. I know we have Ernie and Ed on tonight. Anybody else doing that tonight? Just Ernie and Ed?
That's it. That's the end of it.
Okay. Ernie, why don't you jump in?
Let me unmute. Okay, I'm just unmuting myself. Good evening, all.
Good evening. Just introduce yourself, Ernie, just to make sure people are who you are and what you do.
Hi, my name is Eric Gratz. I'm the superintendent of water and wastewater. I basically run the water and wastewater program. We provide drinking water to your homes in Venter. We also take wastewater away via collection system and deliver that to the Atlantic County Utilities Authority. We want to get water to your home. We want to make sure it's good, it meets all standards. You have water for whatever you use, need, and we want to be able to make sure we get the wastewater out of there, whoever to where it's got to go to the treatment plant in Atlantic City.
Thanks, Ernie. Why don't you give your update?
Okay. First off, good evening, all. I have this titled "A Year of Challenges." And it's going to be kind of like a story, so I'll get to it. Water is so much part of our life, but generally we don't think about it. Everybody expects water to flow from the tap, and it's there and it's available at any point. At this point, I want to just say something about my staff. The staff that we have here works in Venter. They're really, really good at what they do. They all care. They really make sure that they're focused. And we do a really good job of delivering drinking water and also working on the wastewater side, getting it rid of from the homes. So I just want to give them a shout out on that. One of the things we do in the, on the drinking water end, we're going to go first with that. We work with the fire department. A water service system does two things. One, it provides drinking water to a people in a town. The other thing that not a lot of people think about is we provide drinking water for the supply for the fire department. We can't have a fire department without a water system, and the fire department needs the water to do what they do. Sticking with the fire department for a minute, one of the things we look for is to make sure that every fire hydrant in the city is available for use by them. And if by chance one of them is not working, we make sure that there's one very locally in the area so that it could be used if it needs to. Last thing you want to happen is have a structure fire have no working water. That's really bad. We have worked with the fire department to make sure that's the case. On that note, we have a hydrant replacement program. We've been, over the last years, we were working with the fire department. We work together, make sure everything's working out there. The heights we've looked at and we've gotten rid of all the old hydrants. They're called old quarries, and they're very old, and we replaced them all. Except for, we have three more. We get them done, and they're working. It's just that they need to be updated. They're 60 years old, so they're going to be out of there this summer. As far as hydrants on the island, we have some that need to be replaced. We're going to be working through that this summer, and we're going to continue our maintenance program on that. The other part is the drinking water system, and that's where we get our drinking water from. This is paramount. Every year, we have to go through vigorous water testing. I can tell you that the water meets all the standards for state and federal. And I wanted to go through a couple of examples so everybody has an idea of what we test for. The first thing we do is, on a weekly basis, we do testing for microbiology. We sample for something called coliform. Coliform is a soil organism. If we find that in the water, it's assumed the water has a problem at that point. And fortunately, we don't have that issue. We chlorinate as we should. We make sure the microbiology is non-existent because you want to have water that meets the standard so nobody gets sick. Another thing we test for during the year is we do a characterization of the water. It's basically the chemistry of the water, what makes up the water. Stuff like the hardness, the alkalinity, the pH, the temperature, the conductivity. This is all characteristic of the water. So we do that usually in January. We get it out of the way because we have to do it once a year. Another thing we typically test for is heavy metals. And again, I want to say that we don't have them, but we look for them just to make sure the water meets the standards for drinking water. This is part of the Safe Drinking Water Act, and it's done on an annual basis. Another one after that we do on a quarterly basis is called volatile organics. Volatile organics are things like unleaded fuel, diesel fuel, methane chloride, stuff that if it gets in the ground, it can get into the drinking water. So on a regular basis, we have to test for that. So it's, again, it's not there. And then the last thing, I'll give you a little bit of background about this. This is the latest and greatest that the state has been pressing for the last two, three years. They're called perfluoral acyl substances. It's a group of 10 to 12 compounds. And basically, iconic characteristic of, we live in a society right now that we use chemicals for everything. And in the course of making these modern conveniences and chemicals, well, unfortunately, we make some chemicals that really tend to persist in the environment. They have a little chemistry. They have a carbon bond and a fluorine bond. When they bind, that is a very, very hard bond to break in nature. And because of that, it persists in the environment. And because it persists in the environment, if it gets into a water system, it's very hard to deal with and very hard to get rid of. That is a quarterly sample. We've done this testing for the last three years. I'm very happy to say we've never seen it. Has a lot to do, we're on a barrier island, and we're kind of separated from the world because of that, because of the body of water. We've been able to reduce that from the state of New Jersey to once a year, which is a great thing because it's a very expensive task that we had to do. So that's one thing that really was nice to get this year. Some things that these substances would be classified by, if you have leather boots and you want to waterproof them, well, that's one of those compounds. If you buy a car and you smell the new car smell, well, that's one of those carbon fluorine bond chemicals. At an airport, they have specialized fire retardants that they use for fighting fires on planes, loaded with carbon fluorine bonds. They just don't break down. And if that gets in the water, it becomes a horrendous kind of thing where it's a lot of money to get it out. And very fortunately, we have water that doesn't have it. Moving on, we have three water producing stations. We check daily, we check them daily. We check them to make sure they're functioning right, make sure the water quality is good. Last year, all the stations were modified because we had to update our chlorination system, and we went to a pelletized system. Now, the system is great, is great, and it works very well. The only thing about it is it's a little bit more maintenance, and we've gotten to learn that over the year. So with that, with that, we're moving to get that done. And disinfection has become a very important thing with the current situation we are in with COVID. And with that happening, disinfection is like part of our life now. So one of the things that I took to heart over the last year is that we had to have a good residual because everybody's thinking that way, and I didn't want any association with the drinking water with this virus. And even to the point you need clearly water to wash your hands. So it just comes to that. Last July, we put together a pamphlet like we have to do every year. It's called the CCR, Consumer Confidence Report. This is basically a report card. It's a regulated report that tells the status to our residents on what we have to do, how we're doing, and it's a good way of them reading about us and seeing what we're doing. This is always available at City Hall, the library, and Public Works. Last six months, what are you to do? If you look at the last six months, we've been a minimum 3 million gallons over normal. This is good. I attribute this to the real estate boom going on. The only thing is, it was a little tough. In the winter time, we like to do maintenance, and it just makes it a little tougher. As you all know, we had, well, five take a dip on us this winter. And with that coming out on us, it made us have to challenge, challenged us to make sure we had the water supply for firefighting and for drinking water purposes. Fortunately, we're fine to go through that, and I worked very closely with Chief Cahill on to make sure we always had a supply. Water distribution system. We're just like everybody in the United States. We have an old water system. Unfortunately, infrastructure is old, but we seem to be fortunate that we don't have, for any good reason, very many main breaks. We're very lucky as far as that's concerned.
Knock on wood, Ernie. Knock on wood.
We have an 80-year-old water main on Atlantic Avenue. We've dug it up a couple of times, put some valves in. That main, when you cut it open, it looks to be about five years old. So I completely attribute that to the fact that we have a water main in sand on an island, which is a great thing. During the course of the year, we had five main breaks of last year. Two were eight-inch pipe, one was six-inch pipe, and two were four-inch pipe. We replaced three valves. We had 18 service leaks on our side in the street. We did five hydrants. Of that, four hydrants were done as part of our program, and one was hit by a car. Normally, that hydrant number would be a lot higher, but with COVID and us doing shortened shifts over the summer, we did not get very many hydrants done. Growth of the system. It's amazing how the real estate market affects a water system. You can really tell who's here. A quick example of that is, over the year, we had 72 homes where residents are doing work, and they work on the service lines. That's extraordinary. Normally, we see under five during the winter. Absolutely extraordinary. Big number. So that's notable. Let me finish up. I'm going to jump to wastewater. Wastewater, really wastewater, we have a collection system. We do not have a treatment plant. It really consists of just transporting human waste to Atlantic City Utilities Authority. We do that via five pump stations. We have very dedicated staff. They're really, really, they really got it going on in that. They really do a great job, and we're constantly opening up manholes, making sure they're clean. We had four laterals, and this is what comes out of a customer's home. It transports the waste into the street that moves through pump stations to the ACU-A. So we had four breaks, which is not very money for the course of a year. And that's my report, and I want to say my staff, they do an awesome job because I couldn't do mine without theirs. Really, really, we really have some dedicated people here, and they do a good job. Thank you.
I agree with you, Ernie. Thank you. Good report. I had to go back to my high school chemistry a little bit there. I had to remember some of those compounds. But thank you. And again, I'll say that with the staff, they did a good job with dealing with short shifts and going through, you know, COVID as we had to and working through that. We had guys out. We had out for extended times and whatever, but everybody stepped up and did what they had to do. That's much, much appreciated by, I know, the mayor and Commissioner Kriebel, and I appreciate that, so. And the work you do is great as well. We would be lost without you. Certainly, I would. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ed?
Good job, Ernie. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. I have two reports to present. One is just a Public Works update, and it's mainly just a recount of what we do, Public Works, which is, which is the buildings and grounds, streets and roads, traffic, waste, trash, and vehicle maintenance. I did submit it to mayor and commissioners. I'll try to do it as briefly as I can. Public Works, we maintain about 30 miles of road, roadway. We plow, sweep, take care of potholes, things like that. We clean and maintain approximately 500 storm drains and associated piping and outfall. We operate and maintain five stormwater pump stations. We clean and rake the beach. We have two beach rakes. Every do the oceanfront, and one north of the pier and one south of the pier during the summer. We maintain the flags and the banners on the boardwalk and street. We install and maintain the holiday directions, excuse me, the decorations. We mow our public grounds and our ball fields. We maintain the public restrooms at Titus Field, the tennis courts, the community building, the library, and the fishing pier. We collect trash and recycling from the beach during the summer, from the boardwalk, the streets, and public buildings and grounds all year long. We provide support for special events. We maintain the boardwalk. That's the beach entrances, the decking, the railing, the ramps. And we repair as necessary. We maintain the fishing pier. We clean the beach. We work on traffic signs. We replace the traffic signs that we can. We maintain the traffic signals throughout Venter. We support the Venter's farmers market. We maintain the city vehicles. That's the oil changes, the brakes, changing tires, things like that, as well as maintaining our Public Works equipment. We collect, on average, 300 TVs a year. We maintain approximately 300 parking meters throughout the city, and we have upgraded about 100 of those parking meters the past year to the new M5 meters. That's, that's kind of an overview of the Public Works Department. I also have a report for capital projects, so this would be on the engineering side. These are the projects that were completed, contracts that were completed in 2020. So we constructed a new sanitary sewer system on Kingsley Drive along with a drainage system improvements on Kingsley and Wellington and Lafayette Avenue. That project had a construction cost of $450,000. We completed the Winchester Avenue Drainage Project that was at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Winchester, and also at New Haven and Winchester. That construction cost was $450,000 as well. We completed drainage improvements at Marshall Avenue and Oxford Avenue that had a construction cost of $220,000. We completed the library window replacement at a construction cost of $400,000. That was a replacement of 80 windows, both double-hung encasement windows, and we installed a new entry door with an automatic opening at the rear of the building. We completed the construction of the new fishing pier restroom and office at a cost of about a half a million dollars. We added some equipment to our playgrounds. Last year, we completed the reconstruction of Newport Avenue from Monmouth Avenue to the Bay. That was a municipal aid grant. The construction cost was $241,000. We completed the Newport Avenue Municipal Parking Lot reconstruction, and that cost was $190,000. We completed the reconstruction of Hampshire Drive, which included a sanitary sewer main replacement, a storm sewer main replacement, and then curb gutter and new paving. That cost was about $500,000. We completed the Dorset Avenue sanitary sewer main replacement between Calvert and Monmouth Avenue. That construction cost was $600,000. We completed the accessible corner ramp and gutter, concrete gutter replacement project in the Heights. That was on several streets that the gas company will have to repave because of their renewal project, service renewal project. We wanted to get our accessible ramps completed and gutters replaced prior to their paving. That had a construction cost of $210,000. The gas company will be scheduled within the next month, or tentatively scheduled within the next month, to begin paving out there on those streets. We replaced the Harvard Avenue Storm Drain Outfall at a construction cost of $30,000. And we worked with the state and the Army Corps on the Army Corps Beach Replenishment Project. That beach fill operation is complete. There are 550,000 cubic yards of sand was placed on our beach. There is still some work remaining to be done, some of which will be pushed off until the fall. Total cost share for Venter is $790,000. Projects that are ongoing, that will be completed in 2021. The reconstruction of Kingsley Drive, so that project has started. Working right now with replacing concrete curb and gutter. Probably another month, we'll see the paving completed out there. The reconstruction of Dorset Avenue from Wellington to Burke, that's a state aid grant. That project is on hold right now until the Wellington Avenue ACU-A force main work is complete, which we're watching closely. It looks like that will be complete, the paving will be complete this evening, and we'll have that road open between Wellington Avenue between Dorset and Little Rock should be open to traffic sometime this evening, close to nine o'clock, I would say. Once that's open, traffic's back on Wellington, then we will look to begin construction on Dorset Avenue between Wellington and Burke Avenue. That contract amount is $377,000. Reconstruction of Wellington Avenue from Swarthmore Avenue to Lafayette Avenue, that is also a NJDOT municipal aid grant. That project has started. Concrete work is complete. Guard rails were just installed, and the paving is scheduled for the first week, first full week of April, so April 5th. We're going to have to close that road down for the two-day operation, but we'll have that paved that, that week. Drainage improvements and gutter, concrete gutter replacement on the 900 block of Harvard, 300 block of Cambridge, and a unit block of North Cornwall is under engineering design right now, and we anticipate a May bid date. Same with the Richards Avenue and Troy Avenue gutter replacement project. We have three sewer main projects on Baltimore Avenue, Lafayette Avenue, and Wyoming Avenue that are out to bid currently. Will be receiving bids next week for that, and then look to award it at the first meeting in April. We are working on securing prices to power wash and clean the library building. I have on here March of '21, but obviously, we're probably looking at awarding that contract sometime in April and having it completed prior to Memorial Day. Also, in calendar year 2020, we purchased the following equipment. We purchased a jet and vacuum truck for the water and sewer department and also for storm drain maintenance. It was delivered in May of 2020. Costs $370,000, and you'll see it's, it's the big machine with the reel on the back, the hose reel on the back, and it's, it's a key part of us maintaining our sewer and storm sewer system. We also purchased a new water meter van. That was delivered in April 2020 at a cost of $31,000. We purchased a new beach rake to replace a 2004 beach rake for the front beach. That was delivered last May, so we had it on the beach this past summer. That cost was $48,000. We also purchased a smaller beach rake to help us do the back beaches once we gain access to those beaches with the Army Corps' help. That cost was $25,000. We purchased a steam pressure washer, delivered in November at a cost of $3,800. A new street sweeper, delivered in February of 2021 at a cost of $207,000, which has been out on the street now for over a month. And I'm happy to report has not broken down once, knock on wood, so that's a...
Well, that was the problem with the last one. There we would go three weeks, and the hydraulics would blow, so.
Right, so we're off to a good start on that. Right, so we're off to a good start on that and an entire machine, so. Very briefly, that's the projects that we're working on or that are underway right now. We have a whole list of projects that we will begin for two thousand and twenty one, but I figured this was enough for for tonight.
And I think it is a lot, but and I think most of the people listening, all they heard was Wellington Avenue reopening up.
We had to slip that in. I was told I was told Toby was going to call in to report that, but it it got delayed a little bit, so I he held off.
They had a little issue with the paver, so hopefully that
That's great news. Yes. And very impressive list. I gotta say, thanks for all you do. It's a lot of lot of balls in the air there.
Thank you. We we have, as Ernie said and everybody said, all the department has, we have a good team and the guys, the guys here at Public Works take their job very serious and very passionate about their work. And it shows in in their efforts that that you see out on the street. And and of course, the capital stuff, that's that's you guys, you know, having the pushing the the bond, the capital bond improvement ordinances and and pushing to get the work done. Wouldn't happen without you guys.
Hey, thanks, Ed. And the same same with the sewer, the public works guys, they they all, they really went through a year from from, you know, from hell. But really got through it, worked together, covered people when they had to. And I think the guys have done a nice job, you know, coming out of this. And this is our business and we're coming into our busy season. So, you know, they're the guys are out getting the beach accesses ready and moving through those projects and and getting ready for the summer. So, thanks, Ed. Appreciate it for the work you and your guys do.
One more comment to Ed. Thank you. I think you said, I think I saw something that the ACWA will be helping us with a cleanup at the Ventnor West on the I think it was, is that?
That that is correct. The week of April fifth, they'll be out there with us, but they're bringing the dumpsters, they're bringing a couple key pieces of equipment. We're going to bring the loader and what we can skid steer to help, but we're gonna, we're gonna work on trying to get rid of some of that concrete debris.
And and no and no and no charge to the city right there.
That is, that is correct.
Awesome. Yeah, that's good.
Good stuff.
Good, good effort there. All right, with that, I don't think we have any capital discussion, do we, Maria?
Just now.
Just kind of, we just kind of did, right?
Yeah.
I was adding up, we're in the middle.
Yeah. I I started and I Ernie's chemistry had my brain done for a little bit, so I had to to skip on that. So that's it for our our free stuff kind of workshop with our department heads. The next section is really our workshop session where we'll go through the items on the agenda, discuss them prior to taking action on them in the formal session of our our meeting. So the next items up are the minutes. You know what? I I was remiss at the start of our meeting. We lost another one of our our Ventnor family recently in Pete Salata. Pete is is well known in our community. He taught many of the the kids that went through the school system here in Atlantic City and in Ventnor as gym teacher. He was big with ice hockey with former Commissioner Macagnano. Lorraine is on our planning board. So their their family has has given a lot to our community. And if I didn't mention Pete's passing, I would I would be remiss and and just ask for just a moment or two of people to think about him for a second and and Lorraine and the family. Losing one of Ventnor's really, really good people. So I asked for move them to silence. Thank you. Moving on, the items that we'll discuss in our our workshop, we have minutes to approve from our February twenty fifth and March eleventh regular meetings. We have no introduction of any ordinances. We have no adoption of any ordinances. That's a rarity. We have resolutions that we will adopt by consent, resolutions two thousand and twenty one, one oh nine through one twenty four. The first is two thousand and twenty one, one oh nine, resolution of the City of Ventnor memorializing the denial revocable license for sixty three oh six Atlantic Avenue, block twenty five, lot six, and refunding the escrow payments of John John Riley and Lori Carrick. That's first resolution we'll go through. Do we have any discussion on that, Ed?
We may, Commissioner. I spoke with Jack Riley earlier today. He asked me to send him the link for the meeting. And so
I see that there's a Lori Carrick on on here now, so.
That would be, so they they may want to talk maybe at the end of of this workshop.
Yeah, that's when we'll do that, that part of it, before we vote on on anything. And Ed, you just reminded me, I appreciate that, that that Dr. Bagnell just passed away last evening, so. That that's another one of our certainly former mayor's brother their family has taken a bit of a hit in the last year or so, so. My thoughts go out to the Bagnell family as well. Thanks, Ed, for for bringing that. I I wasn't aware of that, that that's that's very sad news. Thank you. The second resolution. Pardon me. Is Resolution one ten. Resolution City of Ventnor County of Atlantic, awarding contract for TASER equipment for the police department in the amount of sixty two thousand, nine hundred and ninety eight dollars and sixty seven cents to Axon Enterprises. Chief Cahill, you guys don't need TASERS over there? You're good?
No, we're all good on the TASER category. No, we're good.
Good. Anything on this, Tim?
It's something that, you know, I think that we've all discussed that we need. It's gonna be, there is gonna be recurring expenses as they age out, but there'll be an officer trained on every patrol.
All right. Good, good. Is there enough for each officer to carry one while he's on duty or no?
I don't believe so at this point, but I can
Might be a goal to to push towards.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, there's definitely some training involved. You go to a different hand, having two devices like that on you. So there's
I never thought of that.
There's a lot that goes into it. And there's a, but I believe it's at this point, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe it's just that there's one on every shift available.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Resolutions one eleven. Let's see, submit a grant application to execute a grant agreement with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for National Coastal Resilience Fund. Tim, I think that's you as well. That's for Ventnor West, right?
That's right. That's one of the a group of grants that we're going towards and and Jim Rattella is is doing a great job keeping everybody up to date on that. We also, I believe we're in the process of getting some some monarch butterfly kits that could be used for that area if we get to that point. That's
Okay, all right.
Can be part of that.
All right, one twelve is a resolution with to award a contractor, William McLeese, architecture for design services for alterations to the existing locker room and break area for the police department. Kind of self explanatory. Probably needs, I haven't been in there, but I guess I was originally. First got an office, I haven't seen it in a while. Could use an update.
Yeah, just something that's needed for having, you know, both males and females break room.
Right. Gotcha. Understood. Next one is one thirteen is a tax abatement and the next few are tax abatements. This one is for block twenty seven, lot fourteen oh two, there's one sixteen, South Stratford. The next one, resolution one fourteen is for block ninety two, lot one oh seven, also known as twenty eight North Baton Rouge Avenue. One fifteen is another tax abatement for block ninety two, lot one point zero eight. So the one above was not twenty eight, it's two B North Baton Rouge Avenue. And resolution one fifteen is two A North Baton Rouge Avenue. And then the another tax abatement is resolution one seventeen, block eighteen, lot eleven point oh two, known as fifty nine hundred Boardwalk. And one seventeen is another tax abatement, so. Block two fifteen, lot five point oh one, known as thirteen, three twelve North Dudley Avenue. And one eighteen is a tax abatement for block two fifteen, lot five point oh two, known as three ten North Dudley. One nineteen is a tax abatement for block one eighty, lot seventeen, known as one twelve B North Newark. Looks like the last one is one twenty, which is a tax abatement continuation agreement for block ninety two, lot one point oh four, known as three B North Marion Avenue. That does it for tax abatements. That's the most we've done in one meeting.
Yeah, that's a lot, yeah.
Hence the construction that's going on through the town in the last year, that's what it is. Because I think they have thirty or sixty days post CO to get their their tax abatement filed with with Bill's office. Resolution two thousand and twenty one, one twenty one is authorizing temporary appointment to John Connor as assistant supervisor of Public Works. This will will take John from just really in sewer and and water and moving him as a supervisor across the board to help both Ernie and Ed in public works in general. Really relying on John and if people in the public don't know who I'm talking about, it's Snake. Everybody knows my snake. His skills in managing projects and figuring out how to how to manage and and deal with breaks quickly in both our sewer and water and dealing with the streets is invaluable. And Ed and I and Ernie, I think agrees as well that he will do just as good a job over both departments as he will, as he has done for forty plus years in the in the sewer and water department, so. Any any question, anything I missed, Ed or Bernie?
No, Commissioner, I think you covered it. John's been a supervisor in the Water and Sewer Department. And and this move to have him as an assistant supervisor over both the water and sewer and and public works is is, I think, well deserved. And as you said, John does have the experience. I think he has forty one years working for the City of Ventnor Public Works Department. I know he's excited and and looking forward to the opportunity and and we are as well. I think it's a good move for for the department.
Good, thanks. Do you have any any questions, Tim?
No, no. He's, every time I've interacted with him on that site, it's always been really clear and concise, so good luck to him.
Thanks. All right, staying in public works, one twenty two. Authorizing designating John Sullivan as foreman in the Ventnor City Public Works Department in accordance with the Teamster Public Works Contract. Not quite as significant a move, but but Sully, John does it, does a great job coordinating guys maintaining our buildings. And and we needed that foreman position. We didn't really have it. He did the work, he just wasn't in that slot. That's what I understand, right? Ed and Maria?
That is correct, Commissioner. He has been, he actually started in that position under Dave Smith as as acting out of title. And and I continued him in that position when I took over three years ago. He has, he has grown and he has demonstrated that 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 he deserves to to become the foreman, take that next step. He's taken on more responsibility and he really has become my right hand in the public works operation.
Good, good, thank you. Next, resolution two thousand and twenty one, one twenty three is City of Ventnor County of Atlantic awarding William McLeese Architecture to prepare conceptual design drawings for the fishing pier gate modifications in the amount of seventy two hundred dollars. That's the second gate, correct, Tim?
Correct.
Yeah, we want to get rid of that. We want to kind of bring something in line with what was done on the first gate. It's gonna be different, but in that that kind of
Well, it also needs, the second gate needs to be replaced, it's
I think it's got a spot well holding in place after that last windstorm.
It's if it's gonna, if it doesn't get replaced, it's gonna require, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, it's not gonna make it, but but and we just thought, yes, it's an opportunity to make it a little more secure, self closing doors and in and out. You know, I'll 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 put in my two cents when it comes to the layout. I think it, maybe it can work in a way with the with the kiosk that we've talked about, that makes it, that makes it, you know, it makes it make sense out there.
Okay, good. It's a I I like it. I like the idea that we were updating it and and make it a little more attractive instead of than the the prison that it looks like.
Yeah, it doesn't need to look like a like a Area fifty fifty one, you know.
Agreed.
It it can be, it can be an attractive part of the landmark that it is.
Good. All right, last resolution is one twenty four, is this is authorize a sale and issuance of a third and final plant planetary retail consumption license to serve alcoholic beverage via a public via a public sale. So we have one left. We're trying to catch the end of of this this boom we're we're seeing right now in our community. And I think it's a, we discussed it at our last meeting and I and I think, you know, this is a good time to put it out. I think we're we're looking at getting it out as quick as possible. Lisa had a tentative schedule that she went over briefly with me to get it, the bids received by May sixth. Was that the correct date, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
There's a whole list of things that has to happen first, has to go out and be noticed in the newspaper and and other publications twice before it can, the bids can be received. And then prior to the bid being received, the applicants have to send in a pre certification package, right, Lisa?
Yes, that's correct.
Seven days prior to May sixth, so the end of April, we'll be submitting those items. So that's something that that we would like to get out and I think the number we've 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 put out there is we would have a minimum bid of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay. The last two went for low seventies and low nineties, so we're jumping this one up a little bit. We think it's, you know, it's our last one. And that was a number we we thought we we could we could get for it, so hopefully it goes a little higher, you know, you never know. After that, we'll approve bills and payroll.
We just, we have one resolution, which would be two thousand and twenty one, one twenty five, and that is with regards to the elevator.
Yes, thank you. So we had a little little bit of a blip in our elevator inspection services. We had a shared services agreement with the City of Atlantic City. They've had some issues with maintaining their own elevator inspections. I think one gentleman retired and another one is out on disability. So they have no inspectors. So this allows us to pull out of that shared services agreement early. And and actually, we're not going to pay them for this year, correct? We were we were due to send them a check, we're not going to do that. And we're going to petition the DCA to come back in and do the inspections on our elevators. Like, did I cover that?
Yes, thank you. And if you would like, we'll add that to the consent agenda as resolution one twenty five.
Please, please do. You okay with that, Commissioner Crebel? When you said approve bills and payroll and discussion items, let's see. Outdoor dining is the first item that we have to discuss. Last year, resolutions two oh three was adopted to permit outdoor dining. Resolution had began, had a begin date of June fifteenth and expiration date of twelve thirty one twenty. We have a resolution that Lisa has drafted. If we want to put it on tonight's agenda, we just need a start date and an end date if we want to do that again. And I think it was a huge success for our community. It certainly helped our businesses, our restaurant businesses. And you know, I I think we should support it again. I think having outdoor dining is something that people it was a release during COVID. You could go out and you could be outside and and I think that's that I think that needs to continue even once we get out of this pandemic. I really enjoyed seeing people outside. I do think that, and Tim, I'll ask him, McGuire, I'll ask you this. Is that we might, we we should put some sort of hold harmless on the city, for the city, that that these, the businesses will have to do, maybe get some sort of permit. Not expensive. I don't want to put any burden on anybody. But, you know, that that they would have to hold the city harmless for one and and pay a fee for for that area. I think Atlantic City does it by the square footage. I don't know that I would go that detailed. I would rather just do it as a as a flat fee. Is that something you you think we should do, Tim? What is that for, Commissioner? For the outdoor dining, when they're when they're putting dining on our space and they're putting it in the right of way on the sidewalk. We've we've allowed it over the years and we've never really had anything official other than resolutions saying in the last two years that, well, last year, that they could do it. What I would like to have done, put in place is something that where we, one, we get protected with a hold harmless agreement. And two, that there's an application made with a a nominal fee, a hundred dollar And two, that there's an application made with a a nominal fee, a hundred dollar application fee through Lisa's office um that shows, all right, I'm gonna be using this space out in front of my property. And here's a sketch of it. It can be on an aerial thing. It doesn't have to be a detailed plan. And then the fee is this and show us you have insurance coverage for that area.
Yeah, absolutely. I think all three of those ideas are very good ideas.
Okay.
I think it's also gives a a chance to for them to, for Lisa to sort of reinforce what the ordinance is, that's the start dates, uh, finish dates. And I agree, I don't think it should be expensive. I think it's a matter of making it a point of of punctuating that this is something that you're taking, we're taking responsibility on, you're insuring it. And um, and that you're you're holding, you're holding the city harmless if if something happens. Cause there was, there was instances of creep onto other areas where they weren't allowed and other places, but.
Now, now, and and I'm open to allowing it to go in front of other businesses as long as they don't um as long as they have an agreement with that that property on there.
I agree. Yeah, I think I think it's part of, I don't think everybody is comfortable yet dining indoors. And um, a lot of the uh businesses are gonna rely on having that outdoor dining option, so.
Agreed. Now, if it's on their own property, that's 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 fine. They don't have to get, they don't, because we don't own the property. If it's their own, if it's their own land, like Annette's, that's in her parking lot. Now, if she's gonna, she's talked about doing that permanently, she should probably come in for a site plan to to show how that's gonna happen. Maybe it's just a modification for as a seasonal seating area. Um, but she handled that very well last year. I think that was, that was well done with the water-filled barricades.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we can, can we pass this resolution? Or should we wait a meeting until we get an ordinance set up to initiate the fee and the whole harmless?
I think we should probably wait for the ordinance.
Okay.
All right.
All right. You okay with that, Lisa? Is that that shouldn't hold anybody up?
I mean.
We still got a little time.
Right. In other words, we can certainly have that on in April and get it done in April. So I don't know how much outdoor dining is gonna occur in April.
Yeah, I eat outside at Water Dogs today, so.
I know, um, I know a couple restaurants. We're talking about April. I don't know. Don't go throw with it, but I just heard some of the dialogue.
Yeah. We will, we will get on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, the second one is the letter from the Red Room, uh Maria and Jack Gada. Um, I have a letter here somewhere. Yeah, there it is. They're requesting that we do the same um Monmouth Avenue allowance that we did last year, closing down Monmouth Avenue, that that quarter of the block there uh for them to put up the tent, just what they did last year. Um, again, I thought this was a a a good opportunity um for them. They have a very limited indoor space in in their in their restaurant. And if they have to go at at fifty percent is all they're allowed as of last week, that's still not enough to really keep them moving forward. So, Tim, I know we spoke to Chief Biagi and Chief Cahill, or at least I hope you spoke to both of them with regard to this and the issues that it creates from traffic and emergency services standpoint. Are we still okay with this?
Uh, if uh Chief Cahill's still on here, he can, um, I wouldn't speak for either one of them. I know we had some, I know Chief Biagi has concerns uh that the rest of the neighborhood uh gets a chance to weigh in on uh how on on the inconvenience factor uh that it takes. Um, we, it was done with uh in in the past and the um uh, um, and so I I think we gotta consider the the amount of time that it's done. Uh, I think it was done for quite a while and in the off-season after the after the after the season was over, uh, to my knowledge, it was mostly empty during the week, but it was still blocked off. And so I I think we have to look at the dates.
So let me ask you a question and 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 I've sent you pictures of 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 sites that I've walked through Philadelphia where they close down streets for, you know, Saturday and Sunday. They open them back up at night after the restaurant would close and they would, but they would close them back back down on just Saturday and Sunday. If we don't have to use the concrete barricades at Monmouth Avenue, if we could use something different, the water-filled ones, say, that the cat can be removed, but the tent is the issue.
Right.
You know, if if they just put it up on, you know, maybe the the heat of the summer that the tent is up. You know, I that that's a hard one with the tent. The the ones in Philly that I saw did not have a tent.
Yeah, so I I think that's part of the issue. I mean, as long as everything is in compliance in the, as a business, as a restaurant, indoors and outdoors. Um, the.
Could be open to it again.
We, I, yeah, but um I I I think, I think we have to do it with um all the other uh whole harmless things that you mentioned.
Yep, absolutely. Well, they did that anyway. They did that in for that one street anyway, so.
Right.
But I agree, we have, we have some hurdles to get over there. Let's, let's maybe sit down with um the chiefs. Yeah. Fire and Police Department and maybe go over some some different ways to do it that they can make it better and some cutoff dates on it. You're right, after the season, you know, some of the residents in the area, it it's an inconvenience.
It seems like we're able to have it all ev- all day uh Monday through Thursday and um ver- it was empty virtually. And then in the off-season after after Labor Day.
But putting the tent up is the issue.
Right.
Getting that tent up and taking it down every Monday morning or something is.
Right.
Would be problematic. So we have to talk about it. I I'm I'm willing to to try and at least discuss it further and see where we can go.
Okay.
All right, um. Special traffic regulate loading zones for outdoor dining. Last year, we passed twenty twenty of twenty twenty. Um, tonight, we have twenty twenty-one or one twenty-one of twenty-one. It's tongue twisters here. Where's Beth when you need her?
This, you know, this is related to what you were just talking about, but it's not just that property. It's three.
Right, this is all of them. Yeah, this is the other ones that we allow. So I think that that's what we talked about, allowing the um, one, the the timing of it. And also the issuance of a permit of some sort and a whole harmless agreement.
So I think Tim can correct me if I'm wrong. I think this resolution still stands because the end date is fairly open with a thirty days after the governor allowed one hundred for dining. If, if you want to change the time period that you allow for something like this contingent on, you know, restaurants meeting, all the restaurants meeting all their whatever requirements, you would do another resolution with set dates?
I think for now. You think we're okay just keeping it tied to the governor's state of emergency or?
I absolutely think you should tie it to the state of emergency. Then if there comes a point in time where you ever want to make it shorter than that, you can put it on the agenda and make it shorter.
All right. And it's a resolution, so we can do it in in one meeting. Okay. Do we have to do anything tonight, Ray or Lisa?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna pull the the electronic smoking device establishments. Uh, I spoke to both Chief Cahill, not Chief Cahill, sorry, Chief Biagi. And um, I think I may just briefly discussed it with you, Tim McGuire, that anything we would do would be just superficial, so. Let the state regulate that like they are.
All right, we'll just pull that until uh anyone ever wants to bring it up again.
Yep, thank you. Uh, potential sale of public property. This is forty-eight oh three Ventnor Avenue. Uh, it's down near Jackson Avenue. It's been, site's clean now. It's it's a vacant lot. Uh, I think we should get it appraised and uh put it up for sale.
That's the site that's between two apartment buildings, correct?
Yes, yeah. You okay with putting, getting, the process, we get it appraised and then we we put it out to uh to bids. We know what, we don't put out what we appraised it at. We just know that for us, so we know we can, we take enough money in there. Or do we put, do we set a minimum bid on that, Tim?
You can only set a minimum bid, absolutely.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's get it appraised.
The minimum bid would have to be what it appraises out.
Correct.
You're only allowed to sell property at fair market value.
Exactly. So let's get that appraised and get it uh, get it out to uh, to a bid process.
It's not, no use to the city, really, at that.
Nope.
That it's in a, in that location.
It's mid-block there.
Yeah.
So, all right, that's all I have for discussion. Uh, move on to the public portion uh for just items that we spoke about in the workshop session. So Jim, if you could open it up to the public, see, there's, there's three comments in the chat.
Yeah, Tim Kreischer would like to speak. Uh, Tim, mute yourself.
Uh, there, can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Yeah, I did. I certainly support whatever you do to help the businesses. Um, you know, the the restaurants with the outdoor seating. Uh, but I was instrumental in bringing the outdoor seating uh to Ventnor and took a lot of heat from it. And one of the things that I regret not doing back then was making the the restaurant owners do something to add to the aesthetics of it, either potted plants or uh stanchions with the the braided ropes that set off the seating area. There's some restaurants that do that. I think it adds a lot of class to the sidewalk and to the restaurant. And that may be, uh, and it's cheap, doesn't cost a lot of money, and that it would be a good thing to add to that either resolution or ordinance requiring the restaurants to do that.
Okay, I like that idea.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, John Riley would like to speak. Mr. Riley, would you like to mute yourself?
It's, it's uh, Mr. Riley or is it Lori Carrick?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, uh, members of the uh commission. My name is Jack Riley, legally known as John Riley. Um, my wife and I, uh, my wife Lori Carrick and I purchased the property at sixty-three oh six Atlantic, uh, September twenty-nine of uh twenty and moved in. And uh, we look forward to spending uh many years here. Um, among the things we wanted to do was to put a fence around the property ostensibly and principally to protect uh our two-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter and hopefully, God willing, some other grandchildren that may be coming that have not yet uh surfaced. So um, when I got the survey shortly after we settled, I realized to my chagrin that we owned less than I thought since it's a four-foot setback on Portland and a four-foot, five-foot setback on the on Atlantic from the sidewalk. I thought that was a, an anomaly and a a unique circumstance. And I did so by looking down Portland and seeing a bunch of people who had planter island steps and so forth in that four-foot area. And I thought their properties all went to the uh to the sidewalk. And I think parenthetically, a couple of them told me that they thought so as well. I don't think that's the case after having spoken recently with Ed Stinson, who's been very informative to me over the last week or so. But in any event, we went over, I went over to the uh, to the building and went to the construction office with my survey. I said, look, this is what I'd like to do. I'd like to put it on the edge. And I was told, well, you have to go get an application for revocable license. Obviously, that's what we did. We filled it out. We got the additional survey. Um, and filled it out, putting down that the reason for hardship was the property was situated in such a way that to try to put a fence on the property line would be ill-advised uh given the fact that the landscape beds stick out three to four feet, two to three feet, three to four in some instances. It would leave a situation where a fence would be in the middle of the lawn and only leave about two or so feet between the fence and and thorn bushes in some some fashion for our granddaughter. So uh, it was on that basis that we submitted it on November nineteen and um, and hoped that it would be approved, uh, sort of expected it, given the fact that there were others that I thought had other things on that, on that um right-of-way, so to speak. Um, a couple of weeks ago, Ed uh was kind enough to let us know that uh it was denied and uh it intended to be denied because the decision had been made that um it did not constitute in the city's mind a hardship. Um, obviously, that's something, I guess, we can agree to disagree on. We think it does and we think it's important for us um for the security of our uh grandchild and and others that may come along and for their unique situation involving our property. Um, as I said, Ed's been very helpful in educating me as to setbacks and so forth. But nonetheless, I still, my wife and I still firmly believe that uh that it is a hardship that applies to us. But also, I wanted to bring, after talking to Ed, we had supplied a photo of what a former owner had here, and that was a fairly substantial hedge uh running around the entire property on the sidewalk itself, which would be on the uh, on the right-of-way and on the area where we would propose to put the fence. Um, and speaking to Ed, I got and looking now down at various things on Portland and other areas, I could see that that there are a bunch of things that can be done in that right-of-way, apparently almost as a matter of right. For instance, there's uh some paper blocks that are foot tall and, you know, form a a landscape bed that uh goes to the um, goes to the uh sidewalk as well as steps leading from houses that go on to the uh, to the uh um right-of-way. And also, apparently, under vegetation, hedges can be on the right-of-way at the edge of the sidewalk. And here's the problem I have, separate and apart from the decision as to whether it's a, the threshold decision as to whether it's a a hardship. And that is that it seems to me that the application of the standard that as it applies to a fence is somewhat arbitrary and capricious when apparently, as a matter of right, you could put a hedge in that's thirty inches, according to what I've been told. Um, although I saw on somewhere in the ordinance that it said if you put a hedge in, it's gonna be thirty to thirty-six inches high. But be that as it may, I'd be certainly, we'd certainly be willing to put in a fence that was thirty inches high. Um, which seems to me, given the the fact that it's in conformance with the openings that are required for a fence, uh, more than fifty percent is open. And the height is at a level, in this case, I would say, we would be willing to go to thirty inches. We had to propose thirty-six, which is under the four feet that you can go. Um, but it would certainly, it seems to me, be less obtrusive and less of a of a site problem to have a fence with openings as opposed to a dense hedge. Um, so uh, the application, as I understand it, is, well, fences become structures and structures get you into this a maelstrom where you have to apply and you have to get to a hardship. Whereas hedges are vegetation and you can put them in. That's not a problem. But again, it seems to me it's arbitrary and capricious to say a hedge which is denser, thicker or obstructive of sight lines um would be um, you know, somehow better than putting a fence in that is appropriately uh in conformance with the requirements of the uh ordinance. So uh, for the two reasons I just said, set forth, I think that, you know, we would hope that it would not be the decision. If it is, then obviously we'll you know, have to accept it and move on, but uh it's certainly not what we would have um wanted. So I appreciate your time and um, and I appreciate your um consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Riley. Uh, I mean, I I we looked at the the proposal, the the request and and our our police chief had some concerns with the fencing being out that far. I I would actually look to amend our our ordinance that would allow landscaping in that site triangle. The issue that was raised is is site visibility there. With cars coming either direction, people being able to see, pulling out and and whatever. That's what the concern is. It was a safety concern, whether or not that falls to the hardship level um that you described. Uh, that may be the official reason that it that it doesn't meet this hardship. And I think some of the discussions that we had in last month's meeting um, when it was presented to us in our discussion portion, was that you know, what's causing this is your landscaping up against the house, not something that the city has done to create this. It's our right-of-way. It's at a corner of a, one of the most heavily traveled streets in in the city, Atlantic Avenue, where no one else has anything encroaching that into that area down Atlantic Avenue. Yes, they do on Portland. I completely agree. Um, there is a fencing across the street from you on the corner, the opposite corner of uh Portland and Atlantic, but that is their property line. Um, the sidewalk is deeper there on that side. I actually. Um, the sidewalk is deeper there on that side. I actually, years ago, worked on with the city engineer. On that, that subdivision and that's their property line where their fence line is. So. Um, the comparison from, from that aspect is a little different. And the, the concern, I guess, is if, as you look down Atlantic Avenue, there are no encroachments into that right of way from, from property lines with structures. Yes, there's landscaping, um, and, and the safety concern I have with the hedge row. Is that that shouldn't be permitted in the, in the right of way in a site triangle. Uh, maybe landscaping and other things in, in the right of way, but just not in a site triangle. So there's where our concerns are. I'm, I'm willing and I'll, I'll defer to Commissioner Kribel. To, to pull that resolution tonight, denying it and look at further discussions and look at other options. Um, cause what you guys have done with the property has been amazing. It looks great and, and welcome to Ventnor. Uh, I'm sorry, your first interaction with us is, is something that is, that is not pleasant. Um.
Commissioner, what would happen if I put a, what would happen if we put a glass fence? Like, I, I'm willing to do anything. So it's a hundred percent see-through. You know what I mean? Like, like you would do.
I, I, I think if we can, let, let's.
I think.
I, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind sitting down and, and talking with maybe our, or one of our police captains, Captain Fussner. Talk to him, cause he's kind of deals with our traffic a lot. Tim, is that correct?
He does. Um, they're, I mean, they're, they're, um, their place is kind of full right now, but he and, he and, um, and the chief, I think would have, would weigh in on it. I think it also, personally, I think it also speaks to the character of Atlantic Avenue and that there are no other. That you would then be, uh, setting a precedent that would allow fences down the entire stretch of Atlantic Avenue and, um.
That, that, that's my concern as well and, and we haven't done that. There are planters out there, yes. Um, but I don't believe there's fencing that I'm aware of. Uh, we actually had a gentleman come on Ventnor Avenue and asked for a variance to put a fence. Out there and we, and that was denied at the planning board level. Um, around a pool. We had to pull it back, uh, cause it was too high.
Um, but, uh, and, uh, but then it's secondary to the safety. I mean, the, I agree with you. I think if the, if the ordinance. Requires the, that, that, uh, a stru- that any, uh, any visual ob- obstacle. At, uh, that interrupts that site triangle, um, whether it's a hedge or a fence, I, I don't think it matters. Um, uh, but, um, but I'm willing to have them. Uh, talk again and really, you know, dig in to see if there's any other, um, alternatives that seem to make sense.
So Lisa, why don't we, why don't we at least do this? Let, let's pull resolution. Is that one oh nine? Is that the first one?
One oh nine, mhm.
All right, so let, let's pull that and, and we'll set up some, some time to, uh, to further discuss it, if, if that's okay. And then we'll. Uh, John and Lori, if you could reach out to either Lisa or Patty, our secretary. And just look for some times where we can meet. Are you guys down here full time?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, this is our home.
Okay, so we'll set something up where we can even on, on a weekend, like, like I can roll over, take a look at it, talk to you and then, um.
Terrific.
Maybe set something up officially with, with PD and, and talk to those guys. And then probably, cause Tim and I can't meet together with any of you, so we could. Have a secondary meeting with, with Tim and, and the police department to, to get his input on it too.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
All right, so we'll, we'll pull that for tonight. You guys have a great night.
All right, thank you. You too, you as well. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Anybody else in the public portion have any comments?
Anybody else from the public wishes to speak on any of the items that were discussed or are going to be voted on? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or by, um, making notice in the chat and you will be recognized. No, no one.
Okay, motion to close public portion?
Motion to close public portion, second motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, and also a motion to go into the regular meeting, Tim?
Motion to go into the regular meeting?
My second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one regular and then March eleventh, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. Need a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve minutes as described.
My second, roll call, Lisa?
Mr. Kribel?
Yes.
And Mr. Langria?
Yes. We have no ordinance introductions. We have no, uh, public hearings on ordinances. So we will, and no adoption of ordinances. So we'll go to resolutions and we'll start that with the, uh, on the consent agenda for resolutions, twenty twenty-one, one ten through twenty twenty-one, one twenty-five. Do I have that correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
Okay, need a motion to approve those resolutions by consent?
Motion to approve resolutions by consent as described.
Second, roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. Now, could you, uh, read our bills and payroll for the, the meeting, please?
Yes, uh, for the bill list for this period is two million, two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. And the payroll for this period is six hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy cents.
And you need a motion to approve bills and payroll as stated by our CFO?
Motion to approve bills and payroll?
My second, roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes. We have an announcements or public safety report, Tim?
Um, I wouldn't say announcements.
Um, no, there's a report that's included in the agenda, so that's kind of self-explanatory.
That's right. That's fine.
Okay, uh, any commissioner reports or comments, Tim?
Um, I'll make a comment. Um, I had the, uh, opportunity to be part of a live burn today at the, um, Canalier Training Center. Um, I was fitted by the chief and, uh, uh, some firefighters there that helped me, um, put on, uh, full gear that fitted me. Um, and I have a, a huge, uh, it's a firsthand appreciation of what they have to go through. Um, about a twenty pound pack with the air pack, um, the technology in the, in the air packs. Um, uh, you have, uh, gear that's very self-restricting. Um, and you, and you have buckles, uh, five on the mask, uh, two on the jacket. Three on the, around the waist and all these, you have to have, uh, um, and situational awareness. Um, and ability to move throughout a burning building covered in smoke while you're wearing gloves that are like trying to type with, uh, catcher's mitts on. I mean, these are, this is, it's a lot of gear. It takes a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of training. Uh, uh, alarm goes off every time you don't, you stand still. Um, so that you're, so that your, uh, your team members, uh, know that you're, you're okay. And all, and, um, and then imagine that going into a house, you have no idea what the layout is. Other than the things that you carry with you in normal day-to-day, like the size of a stairway or, uh, things that you might know from your experience. But the, the, my, my takeaway was that it's not just, um, it, it's, it's not any one thing. It's, it's a lots of the, uh, the experience and the training, so that these things are muscle memory. So, uh, when you're, when we're, when we're, we're spending money on things like, um, uh, thermal cameras. Which make, um, uh, trying to find people in these, uh, uh, find out where the heat's coming from, find out where your, your, your team members are. Um, it was a real eye-opening experience and, uh, my hat's off, uh, and I, I have a new appreciation for the, the, this, the training that they go through. So that, um, uh, they can get, they can keep Ventnor safe. All that gear has to be on in ninety seconds. It took me about twenty minutes to get geared up. And, uh, and even, even then, um, it was a, a difficult task. So, um, I, I want to thank, uh, uh, all the members of firefighters and, uh, the other team members that, uh, were there from Brigantine and Margate. Um, you know, uh, it doesn't come, they, these things don't happen by accident. We don't get, we get to someplace in, in Ventnor in less, in five minutes or less. Mostly less, um, because of that training and they know what they're doing. So, thank you for that, chief.
Good job. I got to see a little bit of that action, uh, just the other night. We had a small fire right on Ventnor Avenue there. Um, it was a garage fire, so I saw chief and his team doing what they do. You're right, they do it seamless. Yeah, they, they do it like they're, like you and I walking down the street.
That's mo- yeah, um, uh, the cascade, uh, compressor that keeps air, um, to these guys when they need it. And the tanks are always full. Uh, they were in a, they were in a burn there that was, that should have taken forty-five minutes and they used, uh, they used all, most of their air in fifteen minutes. Because of the, it's the strenuous activity that's going on, going upstairs, crawling, you know, um, finding, uh, you know, getting the hose unkinked. And ready to use on the second floor while it's, while it's pulled up there. All those things that you, you know, you don't really think about, but, um, but, but they're doing it. Um, because they, they, they've been trained to do it, you know, so it was a real eye-opener. It's not, it's, 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 it's not just, uh, not just gear. It's, it's keeping you alive.
Good, good stuff. All right, I don't really have anything. We talked about all my public work stuff tonight, so you know what's going on with everything being built. Hopefully by nine o'clock tonight, Wellington Avenue is open to traffic and we no longer have to. Uh, the neighbors in that area don't have to suffer through the detour. Um, we thank them for their patience with all of us driving through there. Um, those roads took a beating. I'm gonna bet Little Rock Avenue is gonna be on our list to pave in the near future, cause that took a significant beating. Um, and I think we're gonna keep some stop signs on Burke down there. I think that. Did we just pop them up for the detour, Tim? Is that what we did?
Uh, yeah, that was, uh, I believe that was just for the, the detour, but, um, they make sense there. You're right.
Yeah, it slows people down. And I think the residents of, of, was it Wooderview? Um, they, they appreciated that and I think it, it did help. So. All right, that's all I have. Um, well, we need a motion to open up to public to speak about anything. They would rather talk about, instead of us talking for a while.
Motion to open public comment.
All second, roll call, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jim, if you could ask everyone in the public if they have anything to comment on?
Anybody from public wishes to speak on any items, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized.
None?
Nope, I do not see anyone.
Okay, uh, with that, I'll, uh, ask for a motion to close public.
Motion to close public session?
Second, all in favor? Aye. And, uh, a motion for adjournment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
My second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks again, Jim. Good job. Thanks, everybody.
Everyone. Stay safe.
Weekend.